I want to thank you Lord for all you've done. I want to thank you Lord for the times of trouble. Thank you Lord for protecting me. Thank you Jesus oh for what you've done for me. I want to thank you Lord for all you've done. I want to thank you Lord for the times of trouble. Thank you Lord for protecting me. Thank you Jesus oh for what you've done for me.
You were my friend when I had no friends.
Thank you Lord for what you've done for me.
Oh I know on you I can depend.
Thank you Lord for what you've done for me.
You have been my mother and father too.
Thank you Lord for what you've done for me.
You have been my sister and father too.
Thank you Lord for what you've done for me. Thank you Lord for all you've done. Thank you Lord for the times of trouble. Thank you Lord for protecting me. Thank you Jesus oh for what you've done for me. Thank you Lord for all you've done. Thank you Lord for the times of trouble. Thank you Lord for protecting me.
Hallelujah, thank you Jesus.
Thank you Jesus. Hallelujah, thank you Lord for all you've done. You've done. Done. You've done for me.
Wow. Is this mic on? Did you hear me say wow? That was incredible. Thank each and every one of you for sharing your gift with us of music and the arts. We certainly do appreciate it. And I just want to say this. We live in the greatest country in the world, America. The opportunities that we now have here and you young people have before you in America is unmatched anywhere else in the world. And we want you to take full advantage of what's out here for you in this country. I've had the privilege of traveling to other countries. And I'm telling you as a first witness, this country provides things. And many people gave their lives so that we can have the country we have now. Is that right, parents? They sacrificed so that you can have the education that you have now. Thank you so much for sharing your gift. And I hope you're working just as hard with your academics as you are with your music. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you Mr. Millie for your gift as well. We appreciate you. Okay. Parents, any parents here, please stand up so we can acknowledge you for supporting us as we support your children. If you're here, no parents tonight? Oh, there's one. All right. The principal. The principal of Westwood is here. Okay. Thank you Mr. LaSue. He is the parent of Westwood. At this time, we ask the board members to please come back up. And again, you did a wonderful job. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to open up our here proposed adoption hearing for the procedures of student assignment manual. Are there any public comments regarding this particular proposed adoption? Seeing there are no comments, we will close the public hearing at this time. Okay, we also have a, oh, we need to take a motion. Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation from the superintendent first, please?
I recommend the board approve the procedures for student assignment manual as presented.
Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll and second by Ms. Carol Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote carries five zero. We also have two public hearings that we are going to present today. I will now open up the public hearing to receive comments on the proposed adoption of the agreement to purchase real property under the option contract. Do we have any comments in this, for this particular item? Okay, the public hearing is now closed and we're going to-
Hold on a second.
We have someone? Can you please come up to the podium, please? Present your name and you have that opportunity to speak at the podium.
I'm Betty Modell.
Welcome, Ms. Moselle.
I live in PGA Village. And I just was wondering if this was the option to buy the property by the restaurant, Tudo Fresco?
Okay, we are going to have our superintendent speak on that behalf. Is that that particular property?
Yes.
Okay.
We were wondering, we read that you have 450 parking places and whatever else needs to happen at the administration building. And we just were wondering about the traffic impact and have that been a study? And the second question is, I had heard you were going to be over in the vacant property near Carrabas.
The site itself is the site right at the exit there, next to Tudo Fresco is the restaurant. And the, it's currently under, we're doing the design phase right now. I'm not sure if 450 is an accurate number of parking spots. One of the things that we will do though is we'd be happy to meet with the residents or any members of the PGA community to share this information.
What about the traffic?
There's a traffic, we can do, we'll be looking at the traffic study as well. We only have approximately 200 employees that come in there. I would ask for Mr. Sanders, if you have any, Marty, Mr. Sanders is our director of facilities and he may have, can give you an update regarding the traffic and what we look at, everything that goes into this purchasing of property. Mr. Sanders?
That's because we're already lined up with the little circle there and then to get over the overpass.
Hi. For the record, my name is Marty Sanders. I'm the facilities director for St. Lucie County School District. The PGA Development of Regional Impact has done a traffic study as part of their development of regional impact. And there's certain approvals that are vested as part of that development of regional impact. What we've looked at doing as part of the purchase agreement, they are transferring the development rights that are already vested to us for about 130,000 square feet of our building. And they're assuring that that's allowed as part of that development of regional impact. The traffic impact we're looked at, we're working with the TPO as well to try to advance the bridge, the new bridge over I-95 that will solve that problem. That project that primarily, the traffic impacts are St. Lucie West Boulevard between Peacock and Commerce Park Drive and the traffic circle there adds another bridge and additional lanes there. That project's already funded. It's on the TPO plan. It's scheduled for a couple of years out. And we've had preliminary discussions with the TPO about trying to advance that because, you know, it's going to certainly be in the public interest to both PGA and the school district to try to advance that to help solve the traffic problems while we come in there and solve your problems as well.
Mr. Sanders, what is that zoned already?
It's zoned, general commercial. It's already, the comprehensive land plan and the zoning already has that. What we're proposing with an office building, that's what I was talking about, that there's a trade-off of, there's already approved commercial land use as part of-
So like a strip mall?
Commercial, you're correct. Restaurants, retail, which are generally a higher traffic generator than an office. And we've looked at that with the traffic engineer at both St. Lucie County and the Coulter's traffic engineer, that what we're proposing is kind of a complementary use, that the peaks do not occur at the same time as restaurant and retail does with the offices. So we're hoping that we're going to be complementary on reducing the traffic impact by having office versus general commercial.
So if the school district didn't purchase that property, a massive developer could do that and turn it into something without going reselling purposes?
Again, there's a development of regional impact. It's already got approved development on that site and those development impacts have already been accounted for. And that's why Coulter has already put in money to do the third, the bridge as well. So yes, sir, that's correct.
Well, that's all true, but that's several years down the road, which means probably several more years down the road. And I just don't really think that the education times are different from what we already have, the eight to five, you know? So I think the restaurants would be really more different times. But I'm just concerned as a resident so that I can get in and out without it being too scary because it's a lot of traffic right now. So thank you for your time.
And thank you, Ms. Moselle, for your comments for the public hearing. We appreciate it and we do hear what you're saying. Thank you very much. At this time, the public hearing, if there be no one else for comment, the public hearing will close at this time. And we will call on Mr. Gent who has a presentation on this matter. And he will explain further to the community what we're doing here with the-
Thank you, Dr. Mills. What I have to say is really what was already presented. This will just be a brief, brief summary of what we presented to the board back on October the 3rd, that we're looking at a 50-year building investment. We looked at the option of owning versus purchasing a building. As we talked to you all, one of the things that was most important to the district was to protect the inventory of existing sites for future growth. And by using those sites, it would curtail the district's ability to purchase large sites in the future. We really looked at this again as a 20, 30, 40, 50-year investment. We looked at the long-term and short-term needs. We looked at accessibility for the community, for employees, business curb appeal, convenient access for the parents, for schools, central office staff, a positive community image, and something that was economical. We shared before that this will not come from general funds, but will come from insurance monies, it'll come from a possible bond, and come from the possible selling of the building that we currently have in. I also shared with the board regarding the demographics of the county and what those demographics have been as the county as a whole. We looked at the economics of the folks that live in our county as well. The most important factor, or one of the most important factors, was the 20, 30, 40 demographic population center in the future, which would be really located right at St. Lucie West Boulevard and the Turnpike, the bylaws there and Home Depot as the center of the population in our schools. We initially had 26 sites, I'm sorry, 24 sites that we reviewed, narrowed it down to the four site, six sites, and then talked about each one of those sites with the board. And in December, December 12th, just a month ago, we negotiated the option agreement for the purchase of the site. The board has been provided the copies of that along with the First Amendment that went through with that. The agreement establishes the purchase price of $1,765,000. Two independent appraisals were done that were higher than the purchase price, so we're getting a good deal, good value. This was just confirmed with the county that this is consistent with the county's comprehensive growth plan. That, I got that, I have a letter that was sent to me yesterday from the county office. On December the 6th, we published a notice for the public hearing for this evening. And it's my belief that the best interest of the district will be served by approving and ratifying this agreement. And I will make that recommendation after there's any board comments. Thank you.
Board members, do we have any comments or any questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, would you give us your recommendations?
Recommend the board adopt the resolution and approve the agreement to purchase real property under the option contract as presented.
Entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll. Second. Who said second?
Miss Hensley.
Okay, Miss Hensley. Second, all in favor? Aye. Motion approved, five zero. This time, we're going to go right into special order business. We're going to ask our superintendent to take over this portion of the meeting, please.
Thank you. Last for Mrs. Patrick to come on up and make the introductions. We have quite a few board members this evening and some great things happening in the school district, so we can head on down to the front here and say congratulations to the different groups.
As you come down, it is certainly my pleasure. We have two very special guests that we're going to recognize at the beginning of the special orders. And we're going to start with a young man who is a student of ours. This young man, Mr. Robert Golden III, is a student from Port St. Lucie High School. And as I say his name, Robert Golden, his name may ring a bell. He has been heralded by many as a hero, a courageous individual, a compassionate humanitarian. Robert is a senior at Port St. Lucie High School who has, who was on his way home from school in December when he witnessed an injured motorcyclist. Realizing the situation was dire, Robert stepped forward into the midst of onlookers. He asked for a belt to create a tourniquet to help stop the bleeding until first responders could arrive on site. He is credited by those first responders as saving a man's life. And this evening, we as a school district, we as people here this evening to recognize him are honored for this young man's valiant efforts. And we want to say thank you for modeling such behavior for us and for others. Robert, we do so appreciate you. And you are joined by your proud principal, Mr. Adrian Ocampo. And I know you've got many of your family members here this evening, so we'd like to take a picture of you. And again, we do appreciate what you have done. Superintendent Gent, board members, Robert would like to say a couple of words.
First of all, I want to say thank you very much to everybody. I, every day I think about the incident since it's happened. And it could have, anybody could have done the same thing that I'd done. It's just something needed, somebody needed to take charge of the situation at the moment. And I didn't see anybody else doing it. And I'm the one who took charge. Growing up, kids often think to themselves, what do I want to do when I grow up? That's a question, and you can ask any kid and you'll get a different answer for each one. Sometimes the job picks the person. And I highly believe that with the influence of my family and my friends, that my life is pretty well set onto the career choice that I want to go into, which would be a paramedic or something in the medical field. And it's just, it's an amazing thing that has happened to me with the experience itself. So thank you, everybody.
Quite an amazing young man. And as we move from our amazing students, we're going to transition to an amazing teacher, Ms. Nardi Rowton. C.A. Moore instructor Nardi Rowton recently stood before the Florida Cabinet as a teacher of distinction so that Governor Rick Scott could recognize her with a shine award. This prestigious award is presented to teachers and administrators in Florida who make significant contributions to the field of education. And we couldn't agree more because Ms. Nardi Rowton is indeed a 20-year veteran educator. She is also recognized as the 2015 Milken Educator Award winner. She is a member of the Teacher Leader Fellowship Group and a member of the Florida Leadership Group. She is a mentor to many and an inspiration for sure. She is currently working on her second master's degree in educational leadership. Congratulations, Nardi Rowton. We are so very proud of you. I would like also for Nardi's administrative team to stand because I know that they are here this evening to support her. So we have her administrative staff in the audience, her cheerleaders. Would you all like to come forward and have a group picture? I know that you, yes, so that we can post this in the office. That would be great. And as we look at the accomplishments that are taking place here in St. Lucie County, we are so very proud of the academic achievements, but we know that we too are looking at the whole child. And we are so thrilled that for yet another year, we are seeing our positive behavior, intervention, and supports trends moving upward. We have Mr. Bill Tomlinson to share with us our model schools for this evening. Mr. Tomlinson?
Thank you, Ms. Patrick. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Gent, each year, the University of South Florida's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Project recognizes schools throughout the state that have made model school status by demonstrating innovative, creative, and functional ways of supporting positive behavioral interventions and supports in their respective schools. Specific characteristics of PBS model schools are their consistent methods of utilizing their data, teaching PBIS to all students, creating creative and engaging reinforcement systems, extending PBIS throughout the campus, and partnering with community and parents, including PBIS into their daily activities across all settings as well. Our model schools have made a commitment to both positive behavior and the appropriate behavior and intervention supports by successfully developing a multi-tiered system within their schools. It is with the greatest pleasure that I come before you tonight to inform you that we have 22 schools in St. Lucie County that have made model school status this year. We had 17 last year, so we're up to 22 this year. So what an achievement. Also have my team with me, Latonya Green, who is the Director of Student Services, Donna Gill, who is the Director of Exceptional Student Education, Robert O'Neil, who is our coordinator for PBIS. And Robert works tirelessly with the schools within our system to make sure that this PBIS project is up and running. But I have a special person to introduce tonight. This is Robin Vanover. She is from the University of South Florida, and she's going to make just a brief statement.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to thank the St. Lucie County School District for inviting the University of South Florida to work with its fabulous team members and all of the schools. They all worked tirelessly to support our students and to make it a safe and learning environment. So thank you for inviting us here.
I would like to begin with a recognition of our bronze schools. And those two schools, if you would please come forward, Savannah Ridge Elementary and Wetherby Elementary. Congratulations. And now for PBIS Gold Model Schools, Alapata Flats, KDA 8, Bay Shore Elementary, Floresta Elementary, Manatee Academy, KDA 8, Mariposa Elementary School, Northport, KDA 8, Okamic, KDA 8, Palm Point, KDA 8 School, Parkway Elementary, Rivers Edge Elementary, Southport Middle School, Village Green Elementary, Westgate, KDA 8, and Windmill Point Elementary. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Take the long way around. It's a bad problem, man.
Yeah. Good, how are you?
They just keep coming. They just keep coming.
That's a lot of schools. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight to present these schools to you and their model PBIS status. I would also like to recommend or to recognize other members of our team, our school psychologists, our social workers, our behavior analyst and ESC staff who work diligently to consult with schools to make sure that this program is implemented appropriately. Thank you very much and good evening.
And as our final recognition this evening, I invite Dr. Helen Wild, who is going to recognize several of our teachers who have continued their professional development.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Gent. I'm very pleased to be here this evening to recognize some outstanding educators along with Beth Bonvey, our Science Curriculum Specialist. A couple of years ago, St. Lucie Public Schools Curriculum Department received a Math-Science Partnership Grant, which established a partnership with the University of Florida and started the Youth Futures Program. This program allowed 25 educators to enroll in five very rigorous courses designed to increase science content knowledge and pedagogy. And the program was such a great success that the University of Florida extended the program. And I'm pleased to say that nine of our educators have completed a master's degree in science education at no cost due to this partnership. So, we're here tonight to recognize them for their hard work and dedication. And the teachers are Jill Albers, Lisa Kobel, Helen Harless, Kristen Sue, Mary Margaret Nidel, Marjorie Laster, Kelly Lunt, Sally Vanderbeek, and Jamie Williams. Congratulations to all of you and thank you for your dedication to the children of St. Lucie Public Schools.
Absolutely incredible what we're doing as a school district with that program. And we thank each and every one of you for that hard work. It's always hard work to implement and to make it really happen, and that's what we're doing as we see these awards presented to us this evening. And so, we're going to move right along to our CTA report. Anyone here? No report from CTA. No report from CWA, right? Is that what you're saying? No report, okay. So, now we'll go right to our consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Harley and second by Ms. Hilsen, yeah, Ms. Hilsen.
Ms. Hinsley.
Ms. Hinsley, okay, second by Ms. Hinsley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Our motion carries 5-0. We will now ask the Superintendent for his recommendation.
Recommend approval of the consent agenda as submitted with a notation that item number 14.1 and line item 1, page 4 of number 10.1 are deleted.
Motion and second, please. May I have a motion?
A move.
Ms. Hinsley, moved.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. Does any member have any comment or item to discuss for separate vote? Seeing none, all in favor of the Superintendent's recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries 5-0 as well. At this time, we want the Superintendent and staff reports on selected topics, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to, at the last board meeting, we approved a principal who is coming back home to St. Lucie County, Dr. Art Jamison. And I'd like for Dr. Jamison to come up and make a couple of comments. Congratulations, he'll be heading up Performance Base School.
Madam Chair, District School Board Members, Superintendent Gent, and members of the audience, it is an honor and a privilege to stand here before you, being appointed Principal of Performance Base Preparatory Academy. First, I must thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for this opportunity because without Him, this could not be possible. Second, I must thank my family, who unfortunately are unable to be here, for always supporting me in my professional career decisions. Third, I must thank you, the executive administrative team of St. Lucie Public Schools, for giving me another opportunity to return to serve the students of this school district. Coming from the Todd Smith tree of administrators, I know that there are high expectations that come with the title of principal, and I do believe that I am up to the task. I do not profess to know everything when it comes to being a principal. Some things you just have to learn in the heat of the battle. But what I can guarantee you is that the staff and I will work diligently and efficiently in continuing the upward trend that Performance Base has, which aligns with the mission of the school district, to ensure all students graduate from a safe and caring schools equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. Once again, I thank you for this opportunity.
We also have two APs tonight, and they don't have to come up and speak. That's when you get your principalship, you get to come up and talk. But we'd like to recognize Fred Woogin, who will be the new AP at Fort Pierce-Westwood High School in the back. Congratulations, Fred. And Jeanette Rivera, who will be the new AP at Parkway Elementary School. Just a couple of other comments, even though we're in the new year and the holidays for the principals and most school staff seems like a distant memory, we did have great presentations in a lot of our schools and the school sites, and they also presented and performed throughout the community. And just want to say thank you to them and what a great job they've done. You saw an example of that tonight with Westwood High School's group. Forest Grove Middle School were able, they had a great opportunity to go out to the McCarty Ranch Water Quality Project on December 12th. Principal Buchanan was out there with them, and they really stole the show. I know that Ms. Hinsley was there as well. And it was a very cold day, and they talked about the new initiative with the ranch water quality and a storage area. And all the comments that all the public speakers made, they really directed and always acknowledged the Forest Grove students. So, it was a great event for them. Just a special announcement that open enrollment for the 2018-29 year, the application period for the high schools is open now until January 30th. And the only schools for open enrollment without transportation are Westwood and Port St. Lucie High School, elementary and middle school. The application period runs from March 1st to March 30th. This next Monday coming up, we will have the Martin Luther King Grand Parade. And just a reminder, I know everyone knows this, but the lineup's at 9:00 a.m., and the parade starts at 10:00 a.m. up in Fort Pierce on Martin Luther King Boulevard. And there'll be a festival in the park at Lawnwood Stadium from noon to 5:00 o'clock. Also, an event that we started last year, the Historically Black College and Spanish Institutions College Fair, that will be Monday, the 22nd. We currently have recruiters coming from 17 colleges and universities. And they'll also have, parents will have an opportunity that evening from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And we've been getting that information out to the high schools and to the seniors, and we'll be doing some call-outs. And that'll be at Sam Gaines Academy. Last year, over $6 million in money was offered to our young men and young women. And so, we're hoping that this year's even stronger than that. And then, on Wednesday, January 31st, the Chamber of Commerce is going to have their Education and Business Breakfast over at Fort Pierce Central High School. And the Culinary Arts kids, we'll be feeding them, which is, they're good. They're very, very good. And we'll be touring the Culinary Arts Program, the Aeronautical Program, and the 3D digital design. And then, we have a new, we have a new baby, I mean, the Patrick family, a new grandbaby, Sawyer, was born a couple of days ago, and Ms. Patrick was down there, Carrie was down there. And so, she's falling asleep here right now because she's been up late tonight. And two board members celebrate their birthdays this month. And Dr. Mills had hers on January 4th, and Ms. Hinsley's is coming up on the 15th. So, everyone has an opportunity to get gifts in if they haven't already done so. And we want to wish, as we're really into the beginning of the second term, halftime's over, and it's the second half now. We've had an outstanding first year here in St. Lucie Public Schools, and we're looking forward to the second half of the year, to go as quick as the first half. But our schools are doing a tremendous job. I see many, many administrators out there tonight and staff members. And on behalf of the Board, we just want to thank you for all that you do. Those are sincere thanks. We have a very committed school board, and it's a tough job being in public education. And was going to lead me into another comment, but I won't. I'm sure some of our board members will follow up later on. But we just want you to know how much we appreciate what you're doing. We're looking forward to a happy New Year, but really for us, it's a happy second half New Year, because we celebrate our New Year, July 1st. But thanks for what you guys are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Gent, for that report. And now, we want to ask our attorneys to report here.
No items, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Harold. School Board Members, we'll start on that end with Ms. Hinsley.
Thank you.
And we'll work our way through.
The Early Learning Coalition of the three counties around us and the St. Lucie County Early Learning Coalition, our subcommittee has come to consensus to proceed to combine it into one, Early Learning Coalition for the four counties. It is the circuit, so it does make sense. We think that after the first year, we'll be able to have some significant savings that we'll be able to put directly into services for our children in school readiness and pre-K. So, that is a positive. We've been working on that for approximately a year, and now we actually have some guidance from the state where they will be picking up a lot of the costs of doing anything that is paperwork and all those type of things. As you notice, we are wearing black. We are, part of that is like the Golden Globes because we take a stand against harassment and bullying. But also, we are in unanimity when it comes to supporting students in traditional public schools, and the legislative session opened today.
Thank you, Ms. Hinsley. Ms. Hilsen?
Just Happy New Year and thank you for all you do.
Holly. Welcome back from me as well. It's good to see all of you again. It seems like it's been a long time, and it actually was last year, so I guess it has been. But I just wanted to take one moment. Our District Advisory Council met last night, and Terrence O'Leary was our guest presenter. And one of the items we voted on tonight, number 11, was to have all of our information technology services somewhat more condensed. Terrence says it's much more eloquently than I. But the presentation he gave last night was so intense and so deep that we really don't have any concept of all that's going on technology-wise and threat-wise, cyber-wise and all. Personally, but when you think about a school district and all of the privacy, all of the records, everything that's entailed in that and keeping all those records safe and secure, it's quite an undertaking. So, I just wanted to extend the thanks of the District Advisory Council to you, Terrence. It was a fabulous presentation. And to say to all of you, whether you're in this auditorium with us tonight or watching on the air, I feel very, very safe knowing that Terrence and his team is at the helm protecting us from cyber attacks, infiltrations from all over the world. I mean, we left last night, our heads were just spinning, thinking about and looking up to the sky, you know? I wonder if there's a port up there that might be watching us right now or whatever. But it really was very informative, and we thank you and for all of you too to realize they do so much that we are not even aware of. And so much has changed just in the last two years even. So, thank you, Terrence.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Mr. Inglesall?
No, ma'am, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a main announcement about the MLK activities. They started January 5th with the Week of Kindness, and it has been rolling ever since. They have been diligent in the community. They had an open reception, and then they had a free cancer screening, as well as a youth symposium, as well as a spelling bee, and a couple of services out there as well for the ceremony. and a couple of services out there as well for the ceremony. Now till this Saturday, January the 13th, they will have their awards breakfast, and that starts at 8:00 o'clock for anyone that's interested in going to that. And they, on Sunday, January the 15th, they will have their 5K marathon. And then on January the 15th, as we know, that Monday, 16th, is that the 16th? Because I'm seeing a typo here. Or that Monday, after that Sunday, of course, is the Grand Parade. And we are very active as a school district in that parade. We have really made that parade something real special. I look forward to the floats and to everyone in their participation and our students, and so thank you for all your hard work just today with everything that have come before the Board at this meeting shows the diligence that we have out there, and we're just willing to do so much for our children, and we're grateful for that. I do want to give my kudos out to our Superintendent of Schools. He was at Port St. Lucy High School and as part of the Speakers Bureau, and he spoke and shared his life with the seniors there. And I just want to say thank you for being so supportive, not just supportive, but whenever I call on him to be a speaker, he never turns me down. So that's wonderful to have a superintendent like that. So we just give you your kudos on that today, okay? Okay, at this time, we have no unscheduled speakers, so we will, at this time, we will just close out our board meeting. We are adjourned.